Call the City of Apache Junction Council Meeting to order. The invocation will be led by Vice Mayor Wilson and the pledge by Councilmember Evans.
Heavenly Father, we are again gathered together this damp evening. We are thankful for the moisture that we are in great need of. Again, we ask for a slow soaking rain that will be greatly appreciated. We also ask for your continual oversight of us and our staff as we continue to work on city business. Help us not only work for the continual improvements of our community, but also assist us as we make this place a great place to live, work, have a business, and raise a family. We also ask for your hand of support for the family and friends of Diane Watson. Help everyone remember her smile in support of the Equine community. We ask for your protective hand for our first responders as they continue to protect us and our belongings. We extend this to our military members wherever they are serving throughout the world. Bring them all home safe each and every day in the Lord's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We've just recently started doing the pledge at the airport meetings, which we've never done before. So feels much better when you do the pledge. Roll call.
Mayor Sertie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Barker?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Struble, do we have him on the phone?
Here.
Thank you.
Do we have a...
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the consent agenda to be accepted as presented.
Second?
Roll call.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Any announcements or current events? I know a lot went on in the last two weeks. We'll start on this end this time.
We were just talking about that. There's so much going on, we can't remember much. So I'll take the closest thing, the one that I remember the best is the Health and Wellness Fair, which was on Saturday, and it was wonderful. They had all kinds of vendors and free massages and giving away all kinds of door prizes. I mean, just tons of stuff. There were a lot of people there. It was a wonderful fair this year. They did a wonderful job. Congrats to Parks and Rec.
The Festival of Superstition, FOTS, we were there. My company had a booth up there, and I'm happy to say it paid off. We got some new customers out of it, which is always good. I mean, that's why we like to do these kind of things, so local businesses can showcase, you know, what they do and try to reach out to be shop local. A lot of cars, love the car show there, and of course, the veterans' tribute. That was always, that was very nice. I really enjoyed it.
And there you are.
That is me.
That is you.
So, and, you know, I'll kind of leave that open-ended for anybody else that might want to chime in on that.
Krista?
I won't comment, other than the FOTS was really well-attended. It was almost standing room only when we were there. And we always thank the VFWs for putting on the veterans' tribute. Those are, it was really a great tribute to them. I just wanted to thank people who helped out at Peralta Trail Elementary. They recently installed some playground equipment, some new playground equipment, on Saturday, and they did that by community donations and community volunteers. They had raised over $40,000 from donations and fundraisers, and the community had come out the past couple of weekends, actually, and helped install that equipment for the students. And so I just want to thank everybody that contributed, whether volunteering or donating. We greatly appreciate that. Just, that's one of the things that makes Apache Junction so awesome. It's such a generous community when there's a need.
I'll do the aspect a little bit more on the Festival of Superstitions. Though those of you may know that we had our pony out there and wore him out. We had 79 children that got the short ride, and we had probably about another 15 of them that came back for second and third rides also. And it was, when we say very, we had a pretty good crowd in the aspect on it, and a lot of kids that came out. And at the last ride, the pony said, "That's it." He started leading us back to the horse trailer, because he said, "I had enough." But we want to thank the community and the aspect on it for doing this. And I know the kids enjoyed what they had to do or had an opportunity to. And it was, were very well-attended, and for us to sit on the corner where we were in it, we saw a lot of people come walking by.
I'd also like to just bring up the Veterans Parade. It was also very well-attended, went off without a hitch, and we just had a lot of pride out there for the whole day. Also, I was asked to sit on a mental health task force by Superior Court Judge Hazel, where the county currently has a drug court. We have a veterans' court, and they've come to the conclusion that money could be better spent with people repetitive arrests. One gentleman had 18 misdemeanors of trespass, and he was a chronic mental illness patient. It cost the court and the county jail $6,800 in costs for every arrest. So in trying to come up with a better solution, instead of, as soon as someone is arrested, they lose their access, they lose their ability to get their medications while they're in jail, and they can't get them again until they get out of jail. So we're trying to work on a different procedure that other states have come to put together. But this task force was probation officers, lawyers, judges, and myself. So I was very privileged to be asked to sit in on this panel, but it's going to be an ongoing task force to come up with some new, better solutions.
Okay, I'm going to contradict Gale a little bit. I think the parade was well-attended by floats, but I don't know that it was very well-attended like other years on the sides. And I think it's because the Festival of Superstitions does such a good job. A lot of people probably assumed that that tribute was the whole thing, and they didn't realize that they needed to come back Monday. So I know, I did talk with people, because I walked the whole route on the outside, and that's what they were speculating, that a lot of people went on Saturday, didn't come back Monday. But it was very good, and the floats are always great. And you'll notice Barleins was playing there at the Festival of the Superstitions. That was great to have our own local talent out there. On Saturday, we did the hazardous waste event, and it's always a success. Now, one of the things that we always hear is about that the city gets kickbacks or we get kickbacks. Well, this is your kickback right here. This is what happens with that percentage of the bill that comes back to the city. We put this on, and it costs tens of thousands of dollars during the year, and we give it right back. We do not, so that's how that happens. That gives you a little bit of insight there. And on Saturday also, I guess, was it during the same time as the Wellness Effect, about getting the word out for the Wellness Event?
Yeah.
This thing went on, this was in the parking lot in between handlebars and...
Dirt water.
Dirt water. And there were six different charities out there. There was the Food Bank, CAFSA, the Boys and Girls Club, Paul's and Claus, Salvation Army, and Lost Dutchman State Park. And they were just letting people know what they do and looking for donations. And I went out, and it was not very well-attended. So next year, we need to get like a banner out on the street or a sign spinner or something like the car wash kids do. Because, and I think, hopefully, they have it again. And then also, we talked about this in our water board a little bit ago. I had, you know, it's not fun being mayor, but sometimes we get to do fun things. And I got to fly in a helicopter with CAP and Bryant, and Mike Loggins went over to, was that Deer Valley? Is that where we started out?
Yes, Deer Valley Airport is where it started.
And they flew us all over the canal system and how it affects us over here. And of course, after a few minutes of seeing the canal, I was bored, and I wanted to see our other stuff. So we got a chance to look at the, there's the water plant, water treatment plant. We got to see the sewer plant. There's Granite Reef Dam. And we also got to see how expansive the 6,600 acres that we'll be annexing in, and just see the possibilities of there and what we could do with that. And so with that, since Epstein didn't kill himself, I'm going to hand it over to...
Mayor? Mayor, can I say something?
Yes.
Okay, just a couple things. Our local Imagine Prep football team made it to the playoffs this year. Unfortunately, they didn't win the first game, but want to congratulate them for a great year and building their program. And the second thing is, we are still looking for more kids to come and audition for the AJ Kids Idol, which is going to be held on January 26th. The first audition had some great kids. Couple of people, a couple of the young ones actually performed their own songs that they sang and played their own instruments. So it's going to be a great way to showcase the talent in our community of our young people. So just want to invite everybody to look forward to that on January 26th.
Sorry, we forgot you, Jeff. And now Krista has something else to add.
I always think of things after the fact. Thank you, Mayor. Being that the holidays are coming upon us, one thing that we always mention each year is shopping local. We have our shop local programs that help keep our tax dollars in the city during the summer when things are a little bit slower. But also, just as important that I try to bring up during the holidays is donating local. And so when we have different toy boxes and toy drives and food drives in our local stores, it doesn't hurt to ask management if those donations are staying local. They're not always, a lot of times, people assume that those donations stay local, and they don't always. So it never hurts, thank you, never hurts to just ask management, "Hey, are those helping our local families here, or are they getting shipped out?" And then also, we have our annual, our third annual holiday decorating competition again for businesses and organizations to decorate and compete to make Apache Junction the go-to place at Christmas time. And there will be more information online and also through the chamber about the details on that. So we look forward to that.
And the Girls and Boys Club is having their Thanksgiving dinner on Thursday, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, everybody else? Okay, so now, since Epstein didn't kill himself, we're going to hand it over to Brian.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Bravo, can you go back to the last one on the helicopter? I wanted to show on the top left to everyone, this is a very interesting point, where the CAP canal actually goes under the Salt River. It's an engineering marvel that these huge pipes are able to go underneath a river and able to keep going all the way to Tucson the way it does. And it's interesting, because the Arizona Canal, which is, this is right where the intersection of the Salt River and the Verde River meet, where the, where the CAP is. We are beneficiaries of the CAP Canal. We utilize about 2,000 acre feet of our 7,000 allocation acre feet for the current residents, which is about 2 million gallons every day that we treat as surface water and we store and we preserve. That's the bottom, right? What we're working on with SRP and with our Water District and Arizona Water are recharge zones, where we can actually start the process. If you could think of like a Roosevelt Lake above water, which are what we see at dams. But the new technology of understanding the geology will allow for us to have underground lakes in Arizona that help us eventually be able to utilize groundwater in that way, but we have to recharge it. So it really is informative, and it really was a great opportunity to see the scale and scope. In a couple of weeks, I'm going to have Mike Weaver come, our Public Works Director. He was at an ADOT meeting where we learned the alignment, if you will, of the Frye Road, which is about a mile and a half north of Germaine, where this city council has worked closely with Queen Creek over many years on mutual boundaries. And I want Mike to come in to show a little bit more on this. So this is just an introduction about how the 24 and when the construction will take place. So we're looking forward to seeing that. And what that means is it establishes our future boundaries of the area south of Elliott, where we will have the opportunity to continue to grow.
Did I understand correctly that we're going to, that they're going to break ground on this in 2020?
Correct. So it's about a year from now they break ground and a year construction.
Okay.
So we're looking two to three years away for the final. And so Mike will be able to come in with some of the details on it. This is an interesting, you know, really important infrastructure investment. You may have seen some articles in the Arizona Republic, as well as our own newspapers. And as we look at 100,000 people that come north and south on Ironwood Road, our police department is so active on the interaction at Baseline Road and Ironwood, and our school and the whole freeway there.
Hey there, this is Jeff Struble with Paget Business Services.
Be there, Jeff.
So that'll be a work session tonight, and be an opportunity to ask lots of great questions. I also want to give some huge kudos to our public work staff, who's been working closely with our fire district as we prepare for the storm right now. And we've been pushing out as much information to the public through social media about where they can get sandbags. We are very appreciative of your invocation, Vice Mayor, in that we would love to have the water come into our community in a nice metered way, in a measured way, and soak in nicely. It would be real great after the last monsoon storm.
Pretty much every fire station except the one on Idaho.
That is correct. And every fire station, residents can go and get sandbags and fill their own sandbags. And if they're available, the fire district will help out. And then I just wanted to thank a few individuals, starting with Heather Hodgman and her work on the household hazardous waste. We have some statistics, but Mike Weaver, Liz Leganbach, Tom Parker, Tom Kelly, Jerry Brandon, Arnold Freeman, Frank Granillo, Darrell Evangelista, Heather Peterson, Andy Amato, Garen Masterson, Shane Kiso, and Anna McCray, who have been working to help volunteer some of their time to be able to allow for this great events. Another successful event, 267 vehicles, 189 city residents. We partner, as you know, through the intergovernmental agreement with Pinell County. 179 city residents, 78 Pinell County residents. We did close Idaho Road and Baseline east of the Public Works Yard to help with flow. We're still working on the kinks there, so we're working on that, but we are getting smoother. This event is not possible with all of our departments not working together. And it is a huge, it's a real benefit to our community to be able to have this as part of their, part of their services. Your Honor, that concludes my report tonight.
Consideration of approval of Resolution Number, this is a public hearing, Number 19-29, approving the sale, execution, and delivery of pledged revenue refunding obligations related to the cost of the expansion and renovation of the city's public library. Matt?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Let me pull up the staff memo here. This item before you, let's see, I thought, there it is, is regarding the refinance of some bond obligations we have to pay off our city library renovations that took place in 2007. The purpose of paying them off is to save interest cost to the tune of at least $150,000 over the remaining life of the loan. As you read in the memo from Eric McLaughlin, I should note that he is on my cell phone. We couldn't get him dialed in. So if you have questions for bond counsel, Eric is available, and I can hold him up to the mic here. But we also have Nick Dodd in the audience here in the blue suit up front, acting as our financial advisor with Piper Jaffrey. our financial advisor with Piper Jaffrey. You'll see in the memo here, the primary purpose of this memo is to give authority to the city manager to move forward to execute these refinancing of the bonds by direct placement with potential purchasers. As I said, it should save the city interest costs of about 150,000 over the life of the remaining life. And the resolution, it's on for a public hearing and adoption tonight because time is of the essence with this. We want to capture the best rates as possible, and it all happened pretty quickly.
What, what is the life of this?
Um, I believe, and Nick may be able to remind me, I believe it's seven more years approximately.
Twenty-six?
So, it was, what was the total?
I thought it was.
Yeah, I think it is.
So, it remains 26?
Correct.
Okay. That was my question.
Yes.
So, we're going to save money and still get it paid at the same time we plan to get it paid.
That's correct.
All right, I like that.
Now, in, in the resolution, it'll give us authority to move forward with this purchase agreement and trustee agreement, as well as the letter of instruction, which are all just, the Bond Counsel and the financial advisors helping us through all of this. Are there any questions for me, the Bond Counsel, or, or Mr. Dodd, our financial advisor, about what we're doing and why, or the process of what the resolution does?
This happens a time before several of us were even on the council.
Correct.
And so, if you could just give us just a short synopsis of
The, the way I like to describe it is it's a mortgage that you, you may have on, on your home, and similar in the city, we take on debt. Then this case, the primary part of this debt was to do an expansion to the library. And so, as we get further on, you, you enter into an agreement with the debt, and you have an interest rate of X. Well, interest rates are better, and we've looked at it, and now the interest rate is X minus Y. If you do what's called a refunding or a new placement, and Nick, make sure I got the words right, I'm okay, then we can find savings. And so, this is what we review in terms of, in terms of the debt of the city. We have a very small mortgage payment in general. This is, this is it, when, in terms of our debt. And we looked at it, and we're looking at it over the seven-year life of about 120, 150,000 dollars in savings. So, we said, let's do it.
I agree.
So, it's for the, does that answer your question? It's for the expansion of the library that we did many years back.
And for the general public, how many others do we have out there for, over the city?
None.
We paid off the Multi-Gen Recreation Center, Municipal Court, City Hall. There is no debt on the buildings other than this building. The only other obligation that continues for the city of Apache Junction is when the city entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the county for Ironwood Road. So, there's a portion of Ironwood Road that the county built 15 years, I don't know when it was exactly, but it was from our, our area, from Elliott Road all the way up to the freeway, that proportionate share, we should have an obligation. And that starts in 2023 for another 10 years, on a, ish, 10 to 11 years, for about 789,000 a year. And the idea that when, when we worked on that was that when growth comes in, and you have a longstanding policy, the growth pay for itself, that when those development fees comes in, we'll, we'll be using road impact fees to help pay off, offset the loan payment. Or it's, it's really not actually a loan, it's intergovernmental agreement with the county. But I always, I always refer to it for us and our community as, as an obligation.
Do we have two?
So, we have two. I'm sorry, we have two. Yep. So, the one with the county is not a bond. This, this is the only bond, and this is the only debt obligation that we have.
Now, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Do you need to come up to the microphone and tell us who you are and your address?
My name is Laura Lewis. I just had one question on this. I don't understand the declaring an emergency part of this statement. Can you clarify that?
The question on the, the, the emergency?
Can anyone clarify it?
Joel, she's asking if you can clarify
Yeah.
that it's an emergency.
The taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution and declaring an emergency. Can you tell me what you mean by that?
Uh, yes. Actually, is Eric on the line? He is Bond Counsel.
Eric is on the line.
I am not the attorney on this, even though we all worked on it together. Under Arizona law, to do a bond, you have to have a special outside independent attorney. And so, that attorney should probably answer that question.
Eric, did you hear the question?
I did not.
Um, the question was, why is the emergency clause added in the adoption? What, what does the emergency clause mean?
The emergency, the emergency clause makes the resolution immediately effective if adopted. And the reason for that is that this is a refunding. And so, we want the authority to be effective immediately, that 30-day referendum period, so that Piper Jaffrey can release the request for proposals to purchase the bonds, and you can hit the market at the right time, so that you don't have to wait, essentially, you don't have to wait 30 days and potentially miss out on advantageous market conditions.
Got it. That clears it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Hearing and seeing no others will close the public hearing. Any more discussion?
I'd just like to say, for the public's sake, that we had an executive session meeting on this prior to tonight's meeting to give us full, further understanding of what we were doing. It wasn't just this short of a presentation.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move to approve Resolution Number 19-29, Approving the Sale Execution and Delivery of Pledged Revenue Refunding Obligations, evidencing all of the interests of the owner thereof in a purchase agreement, the proceeds of which will refinance the cost of expansion and renovation of the city's public library, authorizing the execution and delivery of such purchase agreement, a trust agreement, a letter of instruction, and other necessary documents, delegating authority to the city manager and the assistant city manager of the city to determine certain matters and terms with respects to the foregoing, authorizing the prepayment in advance of maturity of certain outstanding obligations, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transaction contemplated by the resolution and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Oh, he got disconnected and isn't joining.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Nana, Your Honor?
Discussion and Possible Approval of the Legal Advertising Agreement with the Arizona Republic. Jennifer?
Your Honor, this is an annual contract the city has with the Arizona Republic. They are the only paper that we are able to publish our ordinances, resolutions, our IGAs, hearings, bids, things like that. What you have before you is information on the recent price increase that they did back in 2018. I've added the Arizona Business Gazette, but this is not a paid paper, so they don't qualify, even though it would have been the best option as far as cost. So, we are using the Mesa Republic and the Arizona Republic full run for advertising.
Let's say it's 10 years from now, and newspapers continue to slide. Are they still going to continue to force us to do this? Because it's very antiquated.
There have been discussions at the legislature over the last couple of years that have been going on for quite a while. At this time, we're still able to have newspapers. And until the legislature decides that we're not, we're still using newspapers for our publication requirements.
Okay. Any more questions or discussion? If you don't see any, I'll ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the legal advertising agreement with the Arizona Republic for one year, period commencing on January 1st, 2020, through December 31st, 2020, be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Nana, Your Honor?
Presentation and Discussion on Fiscal Year 1920 Council Work Plan. Anna McCray.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Anna McCray, Assistant to the City Manager. I'm here this evening to provide you with a first quarter update on the fiscal year 2019-20 City Council Work Plan. The work plan contains 26 projects that were identified by departments for potential council interaction to be completed in this fiscal year. Six projects were identified for completion in the first quarter. Staff is happy to report that all six of those projects have been completed, and they include the contract award for the citizen brochure, the MGC bingo license for senior services, the establishment of a public arts commission, slurry seal of the Old West Highway from Idaho to US 60, development fee ordinance update and infrastructure improvement plan update, the RFP for solid waste recycling disposal services, and the draft ordinance. There are six additional projects identified for completion in second quarter. Those include the reconstruction of Winchester Road, 16th Avenue to Southern Avenue, the reconstruction of Main Drive from First Avenue to Broadway, the reconstruction of Grand Drive, Apache Trail to Broadway, Superstition Shadows Park fencing, the city public records request process, process update, which is close to going online, and the city code Chapter 8 business license code changes. That concludes my very brief update, the first quarter update, and I'll be back in February at a council meeting to provide you with the second quarter update. May I answer any questions for you?
Anyone? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along. I felt, I thought of one more announcement. The airport is now flying to Mesa Gateway, is now flying to Bentonville, Arkansas, if anybody wants to go to Walmart's headquarters. Selection of meeting dates, times, and locations. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that an executive session, I can't get it, wait a second. I move that an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM for Monday, December 2nd, 2019, and an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019, in the city council conference room and city council chambers located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively, and other meetings if necessary.
Second.
Question, question on that, shouldn't that not be for the December 3rd? Should that not be for city council, not a work session?
No, your city council meetings are set every year, and they're posted, so we only call this the work session and the executive sessions.
All right.
Okay, we have a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble? Sorry. Vice Mayor Wilson?
No, I understand it, yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Nana, Your Honor?
This is a time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Each speaker must have already filled out a request to speak form and handed it to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in discussion on the issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly and/or place this matter on a future agenda for council discussion. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker, and I have several. So, the first one is going to be Brenda Greve. And we'll need a name and address, if you can do that.
My name is Brenda Greve. My address is 1780 East 20th Avenue.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the issue I, I need to bring up is my yard being flooded. I took pictures of it tonight as I was coming out from the back north end of my property all the way to the front south. My, my rock is continuously being washed out to the road, and I actually have a gully, like a river. And I would like to ask the court if you could please allow my friend to speak for me, because she's, she could do a lot better job than I'm going to. I'm explaining the issue here.
We need her name, Jennifer?
My name is Tia Shafer, and I live at 1125 North Gold Drive. And Ms. Greve has asked me to display her items for her because she's not technically as savvy.
Al, can you help?
Excuse me?
Can you help with the?
Excuse me? Okay.
But you can keep speaking in the meantime, so you don't get cut off.
I have a couple handouts I can give to you if you want to follow along. There's a photograph of her home before any damage was done. I project.
Project it on the screen.
Awesome. I'm guessing that this is a couple years ago. This is prior to the subdivision going into the north of her, and prior to any property damages. You notice her front yard, her backyard. Similarly, this is from the road view. These are shadows from the overhead lines, a little bit of drainage going down the front end, no damage to her front of her property. And the 1990, you'll notice that there was drainage to the east and the west of her property noted here by the reds marking. Same thing with 1982, the drainage was to the left and to the right, or to the east and west of her property. Here's a picture depicting again the drainage. There was a small drainage that went to her neighbors to the west of her, or to the east of her, and the drainage that subsequently went into, went into the far east of the property. This is another view, north downward, same drainage systems. Her property is here, no drainage going through her property. Recently, there was a subdivision that went into the north section above, or north of her property, creating a gap in this drainage way. Here you can see the outlined fence and a little jog in that fence line right here. That's directly north of Ms. Greve's property. If you look at the west elevation of her property, of this subdivision property, you can see the drainage holes allowing water to come in. It's hard to see here on this page, but you can see on that little L, there's also drainage holes so the property can drain out. Again, that puts the drainage just to the north of her property where it did not exist before, washing her property. She's now got a huge gullyway in her property. She is looking to get some quotes on what it's going to cost to fix the damage, but I guess the question today for the council is, the city have, does the city have a position on helping her as far as the subdivision going in and now damaging and creating a disparity in her property value and damage to her property? Is there a place, you know, who does she turn to in the city to get, to help get relief on this?
We can't respond now. We will when we're, when everyone's done.
Okay, thank you. That's all for Dean right now.
Thank you. Tia Shafer, which we just heard from, correct? Okay, yeah. You had one in there also. If you needed more time, you could have three more minutes. James Bowrider.
James Bowrider, 1054 East Roosevelt, Mayor and City Council. I was here in March about Superstition Skies Restaurant, which I understand is now Lucky Skies. I have some questions to you about why they are allowed to do what they're doing. They now have music and parties outside of the building. I believe I brought this up to you in March. In 2007, they asked for an extension of property from the city council. They received that extension, even though they are noncompliant business. In 2009, they asked for an extension of property, and they received it from the city council, even though they are a noncompliant business. and they received it from the city council, even though they are a noncompliant business. In August of 16, 2016, they also must have asked for a liquor license and submitted paperwork for where their business was going to be. Recently, in March of this year, 2019, they also had their liquor license transferred from one owner to the other. And you approved it with a drawing that makes absolutely no sense. There's no dimensions, there's no how many people, there's no how many tables, there's no way to tell how the people get out, how the people get in, what kind of noise they can make, anything. Now, they have a RV behind their business, and it's a noncompliant business. I would like some remedies and some answers to these questions. I have quite a bit of paperwork, all the way going back to 2007. 2007 is when the smoking laws took effect. So, if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer any that I can, and I wish you'd answer some of mine. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, Tia Shafer, the first one, they both did submit, and she did want to use her three minutes as well.
Okay.
For a different topic.
Okay. Come on back then.
Tia Shafer, 1125 North Gold Drive. Can I also use the overhead projector for my presentation? I'm here to speak on PZ 919. I'm not completely adverse to the development or zone change, if the drainage is addressed first, without disproportionately affecting my property. Surrounding development has changed over about the last 20 years, causing diversion of a lot of waters. Apache Junction's 2019 FEMA overlay is incorrect, and I need to know who is responsible for the changes, and therefore, the corrections. Apache Junction Development has referred me to FEMA. FEMA refers me back to the community. They say they get all their information from the community. I need to know who to turn to. I've also been advised I should ask you, why is the drainage not regulated? Apparently, some four months ago, we chose not to regulate it anymore. I don't know. This map shows you where my property is located in comparison to the property that you're looking at zoning changes to. There was some prior, this is the property you're looking at doing the zoning changes to, and there was a prior drainage that went across this property. I used to own this property here, and I could not do some development because of that drainage. This is a historic overlay between 1980 and 1990, the FEMA overlay produced drainage that looked like this. Subsequently, this has been built up, this has been built up. This guy is like five feet over the road grade, and this is, it's physically impossible. That drainage has not been here for some 20 years now. This is what is more closely representative of what it looks like now. My understanding, this was still here sometime around 2010 or afterward. It has changed. This is the new FEMA map. I don't know how it got created. Again, this is physically impossible. This is a private drainage down my easement, and this never existed before. I'd like to know who's creating this and how I can get it corrected. Before any more damage gets done, before any more development gets done, I would like to see something happening with the drainage that, because I'm getting disproportionately, this makes my property the firm, the FEMA rate situation drowns my property. It makes my property absolutely invaluable, you know, unvaluable, no value to it whatsoever. I can't sell it like that. I can't develop it like that. Again, I'd like to know who's responsible. I'd like to know who will sit down with me and go through some, there's some easy fixes, some easy ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimber Shin. I've called the next person.
My name's Kimber Shin, 1877 West 11th Avenue. Regarding the garbage waste, I had Republic garbage, I don't know, 11, 12 years ago, and it seemed like it just kept going up every year quite a bit more than all of the other garbage companies. So, I had the choice to change, and I was very happy with who I changed with. I still think I should have that right. Also, you guys mentioned the low cost of the garbage company would be on 100% participation. What if you're unable to do that? I'm pretty sure in the first couple of years, you're gonna be unable to do that. Since that's gonna be hard to enforce, it's gonna also cost the city a lot of money to enforce those things for mandatory garbage picked up. Also, you mentioned many land parcels, like maybe, say, three families or something owned a big, you know, part of the land, and they were all sharing a dumpster or whatever, or maybe a couple people owned a couple lots next to each other, and the person wanted to use one garbage pickup. Instead, you guys are gonna force that person, although they own both the lots, to stop at both of the lots and pick it up. So, instead of stopping, it just seems like you guys have worried about the roads and stuff, that you would stop less often, and maybe a lot of these people might be able to actually even get grandfathered in, if you're worried about the roads. Anyway, just wanted to give that, and also, a lot of people can't afford forced bills, you know, a lot of people that are senior citizens, and I do know a lot of people like that. So, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Laurel Lewis.
My name is Laurel Lewis. My address is 5430 Shiprock. While my home address is about a mile beyond the city limit, I do have an interest in a residential property, along with family and friends within the city limits. The two handouts about the proposed solid waste collection changes provided by the city left out a couple important facts. Arizona Administrative Code Title 18 does not address enforcement of mandatory garbage collection. That will only be done by changing Apache Junction City Code 9-5-1. That code, which is legislative purpose, states in part, quote, "It is not the purpose of this article to prohibit or unreasonably restrain private enterprise from delivering solid waste collection services within or to the residence of the city," end of quote. Whether you call it a contract or a monopoly, the proposed solid waste services will force residents of approximately half the city population to use only one private business for eight to 10 years at a time, say goodbye to free enterprise during a contract period. Does the word socialism come to mind? The administrative fees being paid to the city by Republic Services are not included in the city provided handouts. Please note that this administrative fee the city will collect only comes from single-family up to four-plex residential properties. Mobile home parks, including RV resorts and dwellings over four units, will not have to pay this fee. If Republic Services will do the billing and collect the money for their service, what is the city administering to deserve collecting a fee four times a year from the residents who are forced to use Republic Services? This fee appears to be more, an improper tax, or in layman's terms, a kickback to the city for awarding this contract monopoly. I have not been able to find the state statute that allows this type of fee, as I am not a municipal law expert. However, the city attorney assures me that this fee is allowed. I've heard from, wow, I timed this at home. You let other people go too.
You still have to.
Okay. I have heard from some city employees and some council members that the administrative fee will be used to cover the costs, some of the costs of household hazardous waste collections. However, I have seen nothing in writing which dedicates the fee money only to household hazardous waste. As it stands now, this money will go to the general fund and may be used for other purposes. Even if dedicated to household hazardous waste, remember that half of the city's residents will be paying more for this service than those who are exempt from the contract or monopoly. The handout lists some surcharges that residents will have to pay when forced to use Republic Services. Waste management charges up to $75 for can removal. Waste management will also bill for the entire billing cycle, even after the can is removed. Nothing was written about that, or if rad will also bill for the entire cycle. Also, no mention if Republic Services will be charging for account startup and can delivery, which is a standard business practice. Will residents be forced to change to Republic Service? Will residents forced to change be exempt from such costs? Winter visitors will be forced to pay Republic Services six months of the year.
You're out of time.
So, did other people, if, only here for three months.
Okay, you are out of time now. Sorry.
There's more, if anybody wants to hear about it. I've got it.
I have a feeling that some folks would like to respond.
Yeah. Joel, could you make sure that Ms. Greve's and Ms. Shafer and Mr. Bowright are putting contact with the correct people that can help them, whether it be Emile or Mike Weaver?
Yes.
We certainly can. Then, yes.
Looked like Larry was already talking to them, so maybe he already got their contact.
So, Larry's got a couple contacts, and Emile will be in contact with the engineering.
Yep. Anyone else? But that will be adjourned.